I call to order this meeting of the, the regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Morris for February 6th, 2023. A legal notice required in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied, and a statement certifying the same will be executed. Would you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States. And to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you call a roll, please?
Mr. Alessio.
Here.
Mr. Nort.
Here.
Mr. Quillen.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Benoit.
Here.
Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Rabbit.
Here. Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Here. Okay, and we're all set then. Hey, the first item, we had several resolutions on our agenda from previous meetings. The first one is the PB 1422 Sisters of Charity of St. Elizabeth's. They were all out, we just had a chance to review them and make questions. Want to summarize, can we, a little summary of them? Mr. Warner?
We called that case twice, actually.
Yeah, we should remember it well.
It was the replacement of an access driveway guardhouse on the lot with associated bulk variance relief, the location of an accessory building. The said guardhouse was closer to the lot line than permitted for principal structure, as well as accessory building coverage. The board granted the relief, I believe it was unanimous. And we have on the back on the decision matrix, those who would be eligible to vote for adoption if they either made the motion, seconded, or voted in the affirmative. You're qualified to make the motion and to vote on the adoption of the resolution. Hopefully, it's an accurate memorialization of the board's decision. We had 15 conditions, and that would be it.
Any members of the board have any comments? Questions, modifications?
Yes, Mr. Col. Which is on the last page on the Roll Call section, my name is spelled incorrectly, so. Yes, it is. My apologies.
There's no other comment? Can I have a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
I'll say who moved?
Mr. Rabbits. Oh, he can't, he abstained.
Oh, I abstained, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I abstained, yes.
I appreciate that, we want to move things along. I'll move to approve the resolution. Mr. Quillen, thank you, is your second?
My second.
Mr. Benoit, seconds? Can you call the roll, son?
Mr. Quillen.
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nort.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Yes.
The second one is PB 0422 Springbrook Country Club. Want to summarize that for us, please, Mr. Warner?
Chairman, that was an application for preliminary final site plan approval and bulk variance relief to expand an upgraded parking area associated with the pool, as I recall, as well as construct a second story addition above an accessory structure, the tennis hut at the property. There were a variety of bulk variances at issue, off-street parking, the, both in the number and the size of the parking stalls themselves, as well as a variety of setbacks, the caving wall setback, the parking area setback, and the height of the accessory structure, as well as the tennis hut, the accessory structure's coverage. The board granted that relief, if I recall correctly, and I'm hoping not to have to recall, I'm trying to get that right. The unanimously, I would have been correct, 9-0, and hopefully, we got everything accurately memorialized, including, most importantly, our board members' names. And on our decision matrix, which I'm flipping to right now, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, my apologies. We're nothing if not consistent. We consistently got it wrong in the same way, so my apologies. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, it looks though as if the rest may be correct. And there were a couple of minor changes that were made, things such as the, I don't mean to say it's minor, it was another name change, Mr. Barani, I think we respelled his name, one of the witnesses wrong, a couple other issues, but they were all minor in nature, the revisions that were made subsequent to the first distribution of the resolution. That was my summary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warner. Are there any questions?
Yes.
On the revised resolution, did you change the spelling of Mr. Lukov's name? I believe it's L-U-K-L-D, but I'm not, I got a little mixed up on which was the first and the second.
The general manager?
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't get a request to change it, but I don't know personally his last name, so if it's incorrect, we can change it.
My request would be to check on it, because in my, it's my belief is that it's L-U-K-L-D.
Oh, you can, okay. And we can adopt the, I think that's as important as one's name is to be accurately spelled. I think it's a type of quote-unquote non-substantive change that we can adopt tonight and leave it to us to confirm.
Thank you.
Any other comments? And I will entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
My second.
Do you get those?
Mr. Quillen.
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nort?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and the last of the resolutions is one extending approval for Morristown Motors.
Right, and that we, the board's seen many of those. Previously, we had, this is a request for a second one-year extension of the approval for Morristown Motors, and the, if I recall correctly, there was a Subaru facility as well, yep, for lots 9 and 13. The request was made by the applicant, it would be consistent with the authority and discretion of the board to extend as many as three one-year extensions for the approval. This is the second one-year extension being requested, and with me. I don't, well, I don't know why we presumed it to be a 9-0 vote, my apologies for being so presumptuous, but if indeed the board does approve it, then extending the timeframe to May 5, 2023. Thank you.
Any comments, questions, corrections needed? And I will entertain a motion for.
I'll hold it.
Second. Mr. Rabbits, second.
I seconded.
It's an extension, it's okay, yeah, for an extension, it's okay. All the board members are qualified.
Okay. Quillen.
Yes.
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 Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nort?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you get all nine, Mr. Warner? Because we were presumptuous, but apparently, we were also prescient, it happened to be a 9-0 vote.
Oh, you did. Okay, and with the resolution, so moving on to the public hearing portion of the meeting, we have one application before us, I believe, we have a.
Do you counsel here for that one after Sonia announces it?
Can you announce it for us, Sonia?
Yes, I do. An application is PB 13-22, take obvious creations of C for minor subdivision, block variance. This is a block 10, 311, lots 1501 and 1609 and 7 Emmett Avenue, in the RD7 zone. Applicant proposes a minor subdivision with variance relief to adjust the lot line between lot 1501 and 16, creating a front yard setback of 49.18 feet where 60 feet is required, a side yard setback of 8.4 feet where 10 feet is required, and creating a combined side yard setback of 18.5 feet where 20 feet is required.
Mr. Chairman, normally, I weigh in on the notice, and for jurisdiction purposes at this point, and I will, to some extent, but I think we're gonna have to have a little discussion before applicant's counsel introduces himself, but I did have an opportunity to review the notice. It is important to note that, in my opinion, the content of the notice was sufficient. It was published on January 25th, at least 10 days prior to this evening, and it was certified mail at least to almost everyone, as I understand it, on January 27th, which is at least 10 days prior to this evening. So with one possible exception, notice is a complete and timely served. But before we find out whether that's entirely true, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application or not, I believe it would make sense to allow applicant's counsel to introduce himself, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, please go ahead.
Good evening, first of all, am I where I'm supposed to be, or am I supposed to be off?
No, you're not.
No, there, just as long as you use the microphone, so that people can hear you, and the recording can be there.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, board professionals, Frederick Zelli, Millington, on behalf of the applicant. There is a potential, well, there is a notice issue, hopefully, we can find a way to address it. There were a total of 43 addressees needed for notice, we sent notice to 42. Shortly before sending the notice, I obtained a brand-new, fresh list for each of the two lots in question. Unfortunately, as Ms. Santiago noticed today, when I submitted the affidavit, the 43rd addressee was on the last page of the second list, at the very bottom of the page, orphaned from all the rest of the lists, addresses on that list, and I frankly missed it, I did not see it. As I looked at it, going over with Ms. Santiago on the phone today, it took me a while even then to find what she was talking about, and then I saw it and immediately realized what happened. Also, immediately, I jumped in the car, I went up to Ms. Reyes's home, she's at 1A Emmett Avenue, brought a waiver with me, brought a copy of the notice, obviously, and even brought a copy of the tax map to show her where the lot line in question would be. No one answered the door at that time, I left two copies, one at the door, one in the mailbox, returned there again on the way up to here this evening, did find her to be at home with her daughter, but she had just gone to bed, her daughter went upstairs as a courtesy to me, spoke with her mom, her mom indicated she did receive my package, she did receive the notice, but she's just too tired to look at it this evening and would not sign this evening. I explained, obviously, and her daughter went upstairs again and explained to her again that the hearing was tonight. That having been said, my request, and you're all familiar with this application, what's being requested by way of relief really has no, I honestly can't think of any potential bearing on any of the neighbors, let alone this particular neighbor who's three lots down. It's essentially a paper adjustment that we're seeking. My proposal, which I've done successfully in the past, luckily only had to do it on one occasion, but for 27 years, is to proceed with the hearing. You would not, though, assuming it's an approval, you would not pass a resolution until I in fact obtained a formal waiver and submitted it to the board. Again, if this were an application where there would be serious concerns of substantive objection by the neighbor, I would not be making this request, but under these circumstances, I, again, I don't see any objection that really would be made logically, and it does look like we have some folks here this evening, so in their interest as well as obviously our own, we would ask if you would indulge us and have the hearing this evening with that contingency, of course.
Yes, please, Mr. Warner.
And if I understand your request, Mr. Zelli, you're requesting that if there's an approval, a condition of approval be that you provide the waiver, or, but also that that condition actually be effectuated before any resolution is adopted. In other words, it wouldn't be a post-approval or a post-resolution memorializing approval condition, it would be a condition that would have to be satisfied before the resolution was even adopted, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. If the board wishes to hear more from me.
Well, let me, so as I understand it, our options are to deny the request and have him come back again some other time, or go ahead and hear it with the subject to obtaining a waiver before we would actually, before any resolution would be, if we decide to approve it before a resolution would be passed.
And if it helps, I could have one of the, I only intend to call one witness, who's our engineer. I do have my client's principal, I'll have him sworn in, but I really have him here just in case the board would have a question that's owner-oriented, but otherwise, I only tend to put one witness on for direct testimony, which will be short in and of itself.
One question.
Yes.
Is there an explanation for why this person was left off of the list?
As I said, you don't have the affidavit in front of you, but I can show you.
Why they were not on your original list of 42?
It's not that they weren't on the list, it's just that my eyes didn't see it because of where it appears on the list. I can show you the actual list. There's actually two different lists, because we have two different lots, and this is the very last page, may approach, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And just to be clear, for the benefit of the board and members of the public, Mr. Zelli, there's two lots, because it's a lot line adjustment that's affecting two lots, so you had to do the notice from 200-foot perimeter of both lots, correct?
Okay. I'll pass this around, just to show you. This was the last page of the second list, here were your lines, this other one was just down here, and my eyes just honestly did not see it. May I call that, it's just, I can't explain it any better than anybody else. Yeah, please.
Want to see this? Yeah, yeah, just.
I have a question.
Yes, yes, Mr. Quillen, you have.
Can you pass it down, George?
Oh, sure.
What is the nature of the waiver, and would it be reasonable to say that the waiver would need to be changed if the board had made an action prior to the time that you obtained the waiver?
The waiver is of the 10-day notice.
Requirement for notice.
So you provide, she has the notice in front of her, it's actually attached to the waiver. I can even read into the record the text of it, and if the board would prefer other texts, I can certainly accommodate that. It's addressed to your administrator, "Dear Ms. Santiago, this is to confirm that I have received the attached notice of public hearing for the above referenced land use application. I have no comment on this application, I hereby waive my right to have received the said notice by certified mail 10 days prior to the hearing."
So what would make her know that she has no comment on the application?
By reviewing, the same as any other neighbor, by reviewing the notice itself.
Okay, I guess I understand. It does seem relatively remote, but on the other hand, it feels like we're taking a risk as well, so she is.
She's 1A, she's the corner of Martin Luther King and Emmett.
Okay.
It's a duplex, she's on, she's actually on the Martin Luther King side of the duplex even, but it is within 200 feet of lot 16.
Any comments, I get a sense of the board on how they feel on whether we should proceed or put it off then?
Mr. Chairman, I think we should proceed.
I agree, I'd be curious to hear more from Mr. Warner.
The, you know, if you give me the opportunity, I'll. The, had the appropriate waiver, and the language maybe could be improved, frankly, you know, they could, the waiver could say waive, you know, any right to appear, to be heard, et cetera, et cetera, but if someone signs the appropriate knowing waiver of the right to get the 10-day notice and to appear, had that been signed and provided in advance, that would have been sufficient, in my legal opinion, and it has been done elsewhere on a fair number of occasions, that they, a person can waive their right to be there, you don't have to get it 10 days in advance, you can waive that right. I'm aware of at least, well, I'm aware of one circumstance in which a board has decided in a similar context to allow an application to go forward with the risk being that of the applicant and having a similar type of condition of approval whereby the condition had to be satisfied, i.e. the waiver provided prior to the adoption of any resolution. Before a resolution is adopted, they can't do anything. I guess from a practical standpoint, on the one hand, the board risks the possibility of having to do a redo at another date. If the board says, does not wish to, but it's, the risk is really on the applicant at that point to have to redo it, because nothing would be adopted by this board under that circumstance. The alternative risk is to say, let's go home and come back and guarantee we're gonna do it another night. That may be an inconvenience to board members and perhaps the applicant, but also, I think what's been pointed out is we have some members of the public who may or may, you know, might be an inconvenience to them as well, to have to come back another time to have the case heard. So with all that said, legally, unfortunately, the best the board attorney can do is to tell you that it can be done either way, and it's the board's discretion to decide which is the way the board wishes to proceed, to allow the applicant to proceed as requested or not, or come back another night.
Mr. Chairman? I tend to agree with Mr. Alessio that we should go ahead and hear this contingent upon receiving the waiver from the unnoticed individual. One other question, does construction stop on this property until this is resolved?
Good question, normally, if a resolution, you can't proceed because the resolution's not adopted. This is a situation where it's an after the fact, as opposed to a permission to proceed. So what is the, what is the applicant proposing? Where, perhaps where is the development currently, and what more is there to do? And is the applicant proposing to at least take a hiatus in between now and the resolution of adoption?
I can handle that too, I can place him under oath now and ask him that, and if it's, if your decision as to whether to proceed or not turns on that, then I guess we need to do it that way, but otherwise, I will certainly present that testimony as part of it's, he's here, that's why he's here.
I guess I. I can also help answer that question, I mean, the house has been constructed, I believe that some of the construction.
Actually, Jim, raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, please proceed.
So the house exists, you know, interior work, still, there's some interior work that remains to be finished, but the house exists at the location, you know, where it is, so the setback that is shown on the plan is what exists essentially, it's a, it'd be an as-built condition. That helps.
It didn't answer the question, so the question is, does the construction stop until the resolution is approved? Understanding that the meets and bounds question is not affecting the interior work on the house, but my question is, does construction have to stop?
Has a stop-work order already been issued, I guess, and I'm assuming it hasn't, correct?
I'm not aware of a stop-work order being issued, but I think work has been stopped for a long period of time, you know, prior to this, working on getting.
For other reasons, then.
I think work and trying to work through this issue, because they can't sell the house until this is resolved.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you.
I did confirm, there's, to our knowledge, there is no stop-work order in place currently.
I suppose that we could hear the application, and as the testimony proceeds, we could decide that we're uncomfortable and we want to discontinue hearing it and wait for a later date, isn't that an option?
I guess it is, I mean, again, the jurisdiction of the board would be to proceed, would be, or to start the process, would be contingent on the waiver, but I guess it's conceivable, you could proceed contingent, you know, with jurisdiction contingent on the waiver and decide, you know what? We don't want to continue any further until we get a waiver, but at that point, you know, you're in essence saying we, we're not really starting the hearing, so it's a little odd to do it that way, but it's conceivable.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Rabbits.
Based on the ask of the application, and based on the fact that the public is here, and the professionals are here, I would think that it's in the interest, because of the likelihood of a waiver not coming back and stopping the whole process, that we continue with the contingency that once, that nothing is approved until we, that waiver is signed and sealed. So I would be in favor for expediency's sake, based on just the nature of this application, that we move forward.
I'd also point out that we have a fairly light agenda tonight, and may not in the future.
Right.
We put it off, it definitely gets put off, if we act on it tonight, we may be done with it. I would also, would favor moving on and hearing the application.
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Warner, is it also a possibility that we could vote on a contingent upon receipt of the waiver? And if the vote is yes, once the waiver's done, it doesn't need to come back?
Oh, it doesn't need to, correct, that's the point. It would be a condition of the approval, and it would be a condition that would have to be satisfied before you even adopt the resolution of approval. So yes, it would be done.
So we're protected.
Basically, if they signed the waiver, they'd be in the same position as somebody who got the notice 10 days ahead and chose not to come.
Apparently, there's no stop-work order in place now, so there's nothing to stop either, under either circumstance, whatever your choice, everybody can quote-unquote proceed.
Because I was under the impression that we weren't gonna vote on it tonight until the waiver was signed.
You'd be, you'd be, it'd be a condition, if it's an approval, it'd be a contingent approval, contingent on whatever other conditions there are, as well as the condition that they get the waiver signed and that it be provided in advance of the resolution to being adopted.
I would also think we should just proceed.
Do we need a formal vote?
You do not, I think you're getting.
Okay, I certainly get the sense of the majority of the board to go ahead and hear this.
I'll just say, I'm probably the only board member that was here when we heard this in 2014. I remember this.
You remember this one.
With apologies again, thank you very much for indulging us and allowing us to do that.
So we will proceed, thank you.
And we already have one condition of the approval, if there's an approval.
If there's an approval, correct.
So by way of a brief opening, it's an interesting application, not a lot of substance to it at the end of the day, it's just a lot line adjustment. The history, though, is that in 2014, there was a minor subdivision which created what's now lot 15 and 1501. 1501 is really the heart of the matter in this application. As it turns out, and was discovered as our professionals were putting together construction drawings and so forth for the improvement of 1501, there was a discrepancy between the meets and bounds descriptions of the original subdivisions back in early 20th century and what they were seeing now. And we had a reconcilable difference between our lot, as we understood it to be based upon the 2014 approval, and what Ms. Anderson, is the owner of lot 16, believed her lot to be. She, of course, is the completely innocent party to this, and she had nothing whatsoever to do with the 2014 application. So the only way to really reconcile it is to adjust our property line, in other words, make our property slightly narrower, so that her meets and bounds stay the way they have been on her survey since day one. And we take the hit, so to speak, it's not that it's actually any kind of a detriment, it's really, it's a benefit overall to the town and zoning in general to have, not have that, you know, discrepancy between the two property descriptions. So that's all we're seeking to do, is to make that lot line adjustment, so lot 16 stays the way it was, lot 1501 will be slightly different, and as a result of that, there are a few bulk variances that are created. Specifically, I'll go through them, lot area is reduced. Lot area is reduced, it was approved in 2014 by variance at 7,414 square feet, it's being further reduced as a result of the narrowing to 7,239. The ordinance requires 7,500 just by reference. You have two different lot width requirements. You have it at the front yard setback, well, three actually, at the street, at the front yard setback, and 40 feet beyond the front yard setback. 50 feet, it's a 60-foot width requirement under the ordinance, 50 feet was approved by variance in 2014. We still have that at the street, but at the front yard setback, it is now 49.18. And at 40 feet beyond the front yard setback, it's now at 48.53. So we have two variances there.
And just to be clear, if I may, Mr. Chairman and Mrs. Zelli, it needs to be, in order to comply with the ordinance, it needs to be 50 feet at all three junctures, correct?
Correct. And again, that's by variance. Your ordinance actually says 60, but my previous variance is 15.
But you got some approval.
There's also side yard setback, again, the same reason, because the house is already there, so we can adjust the setback. 10 feet is required, it is now 8.4 feet. Just as a caveat, 0.2 of that 8 point, of the 1.6 discrepancy is based upon some kind of discrepancy with regard to the location of the home. We're not exactly sure whether there's really a .2-foot discrepancy or if it's just a matter of one surveyor measured to the foundation and one measured to the siding. But to be, bearing on the side of caution, we've identified that as a variance in total of 8.4 feet where 10 is required. And then your combined side yard setback, of course, is affected as well, it comes to 18.5 where 20 is required.
I'm sorry, 18.5?
Five, where 20 would be required.
And if I may, just out of curiosity, the, the ordinance requirement is 10 and 20? It wasn't an approval?
That's correct.
At 10 and 20?
That is correct.
It was an ordinance requirement of 10 and 20, and 20, 10 being the side yard setback, 20 being the combined, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
So that's it, in a nutshell, that's what the application's about. It is really literally on paper, it doesn't affect construction because the home's already there, obviously doesn't affect Ms. Anderson's structure, which is already there. It has zero impact, at least in my opinion, on any of the neighbors. And again, we're really, it's, it's really a housekeeping matter to some degree to try to clean things up as far as descriptions on this neighborhood. And with that, as I said, I have two witnesses this evening, Bill Hollos, who's our engineer, who'll give the direct testimony, Conrad Wenick, who is the principal of the applicant, is here, should there be any owner-directed questions for the board, but I was not intending to have any direct testimony from him.
Okay, you can proceed.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll swear everyone in, although I already swore in, Mr. Slade, so he's excused, but Mr. Phillips is not, as well as the two potential witnesses for the applicant. If you'll all raise your right hand, do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give us is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you all.
And we call William Hollos of Murphy &amp; Hollos, our engineer. Mr. Hollos, would you start us off with the benefit of your educational and professional background, please?
I'm a graduate of North College of Engineering and
Could you closer to the mic so that it's, or hold it if you prefer? Yes. It's, does it come out?
No.
It doesn't come out of the clamp, huh? Yeah, doesn't it come out as a holder?
It does.
Thank you.
Here we go. I'm a graduate of North College of Engineering, I have an engineering degree and I practice in civil engineering field. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor, and I've been for quite some time. I have appeared before this board, but it has been a few years since I was here and did a minor subdivision. And I typically, I'm at Summit, Berkeley Heights, New Providence, Long Hill Township, Berners Township, Scotch Plains, Westfield, and then occasionally go out of that area into, into some other communities.
Licensed professional engineer is in good standing this evening?
It is.
Are you seeking to have him accepted as a land surveyor as well or just engineer?
Well, since this is probably more of a land surveying project than an engineering as a land surveyor.
Licensed, licensed, in good standing as the both?
It is.
As part of the chair.
I will accept. Please go ahead. Thank you. Mr. Hollos, could you begin by explaining to us kind of how we got here and what the discrepancy is historically?
Yeah, I can. In January of 2014, there was a minor subdivision that was approved for this property and it was approved for lots 15 and 15.01. And both of those lots had 50-foot-a-lot frontage, they were just under 7,500 square feet. Lot 15 had a house on it, Lot 15.01 was a vacant lot, which was eventually sold to my client, Conrad Wenick. And we had at that point, after we purchased it, we, we prepared a minor, I'm sorry, a lot grading plan for a proposed house on that property, and we were using the minor subdivision plan at that time. And the plot plan was approved, we received the building permit, the house was staked out, the house was, excavation was dug and the house was, was started at that point. And Mr. Wenick had, there was a, this is actually sheet two, the, sheet, two of the drawings that you have.
This has been colorized?
The only thing I colored, colored was the wedge shape, which is really the lot line adjustment. We'll get to that later on.
Sheet two been colorized. Can you just give us the last revised date?
December 7, 2022.
Sheet two.
Sheet two, two.
Okay.
And there was a hedgerow that was between lots 15.01 and Lot 16, and those are the two lots that are in question here, or part of this application. And during construction, the builder had taken away some of the hedgerow, which the owner of Lot 16 said, had a question in her mind at that point that, I don't think that's where the property line is, I don't think, I think those are my hedges, not your hedges. And at that point, the owner of Lot 16 had hired another surveyor to go out there and survey the property. And they disagreed with the minor subdivision plans as far as where this lot line was, which is our, we call it our easterly property line. I subsequently met with that surveyor at their office, we compared notes, and come to the realization that in this block, I'll go back to sheet one, in this block there are
Just to be clear, sheet, if I may, sheet one is not colorized?
It is not colorized. It is same date, revision date of December 7, 2022.
So it's the same as submitted to the board?
Same as submitted to the board. And subsequently, meeting with the surveyor for Lot 16, it was noticed that there's basically two different bearing systems on this block, and that's what's causing this, this overlap. I mean, you've got a couple of lots that have the same bearing system as minor subdivision in 2014.
Excuse me, what do you mean by bearing system?
Well, in, in New Jersey, it's, it's more not necessarily the, the bearings and it's the distances, but it's the angles, interior angles that the bearings make. And there's, happens to be a discrepancy of about a degree between these two systems.
Okay.
And that is what's caused, Lot 16 happens to be on a different system than the minor subdivision was. And when you basically hold, it's, it's the same point on, on Emmett Avenue, and by the time you get to the back of the rear of the property, it's 2.42 feet, that's in, is basically in this case, was an overlap of Lot 15.01 onto Lot 16. So after discussions with the, this additional, the, the other surveyor and some consultation with the owner of Lot 16, the, Mr. Wenick had decided, well, we'll just hold the adjoining or adjoining property line, we'll take, as Mr. Zelli had indicated, we'll take the hit, we'll shorten our line from 50 by 2.42 feet to 47.58 feet. So we've got 50 feet along Emmett Avenue, we have 47.58 feet in the rear, which really causes the 10-foot setbacks to get a little bit smaller. You've got now, instead of 10 feet, you have 9.4 in the front setback, 8.4 in the rear setback of the house. And then a lot width gets a little bit smaller because our, our lot line is coming in on, towards the house. That was, when it was staked out, was 10 feet according to the minor subdivision. We're just trying to really correct the situation, so there's no, so there's clear title basically for both properties, and there's no, some, somebody's not going to come back and survey the whole block and say, well, jeez, now there's an overlap. I mean, quite frankly, the hedges weren't taken down, nobody probably would have known that this was the situation here.
Just to be clear, so we're seeking variances for side yard setback on the Lot 16 side, correct?
Yes, the lot line adjacent to Lot 16, no, the common lot line between 1501 and 16.
Okay, width at the front yard setback and at 40 feet beyond that?
Yes, which would be somewhere in here.
And there is no rear width requirement, so even though we're less than 50 there, that's not a separate
Right, it's basically your building envelope that you're trying to keep the, in this case would have been 50 feet, which was the case. We're not, we're not affecting Lot 15, that was part of the original subdivision in 2014. We're only trying to correct the lot line between 16 and 15.01.
And we're not having any bulk effect on Lot 16, nothing is changing on Lot 16?
Nothing's changing on Lot 16, no.
And again, our lot area is being reduced, further reduced actually, because it was already substandard by variance.
Right, it was, 7,500 is required, 7,414 was approved, and we're now going to be at 7,239. The area of this wedge is approximately 100, well, it's 179 feet.
Is there any other relief that you're aware of that we would need?
No.
I have nothing further for Mr. Hollos.
I just, okay, my first question, just to clarify that, is, so there are no new var, variances requested, they're just a little bit more of what was already granted in the original subdivision.
That sounds
Instead of, instead of the 50-foot width, you now have 49.4 and 48.6, which, but it was supposed to be 60, so that has already been granted, correct?
It was supposed to be 60, it was
And it was 50, so that's the other, the other third is it's 60 and it's 50 instead of 60. Well, it's 40, yeah, 49.8 and 49, whatever, right? And the setbacks, also the same thing, the setbacks, well, the setbacks
They were conforming.
They were conforming, now they are, yes, okay, so those are the new variances, the setbacks, just because we've had to move it. So there's the two, the two setback requirements, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Hollis, just for the record, would you address that .2-foot discrepancy on the side yard setback dealing with the building location?
Well, some surveyors will actually try to get to the foundation if they can, measure to the, to the exact foundation, and then others will actually just measure to the siding. But 8.4 is the minimum that we're talking.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Wilson.
So on the 2014 subdivision approval, that was based on a survey that, are you saying that survey was inaccurate?
No, I really wouldn't say that. It's just a different deed system and, which created something a little bit more at right angles, where this has a little, you can see that, well, I guess it had more of a, a little bit more of a slope or angle to it. I, yeah, I wouldn't call it incorrect, it's just, just a different system. And looking at the deeds for most all the lots in there, there's predominantly would be the same as Lot 16, there are a few that would be same as 15 and 15.01, but they, but the difference is, there's about a degree different, which makes those lines a little bit different.
So you've now agreed that the most current survey is the accurate, or is the survey of use that everyone's agreeing to, is that correct?
Well, it's just really these two lots are agreeing to. I mean, maybe someday there will be another lot line adjustment somewhere down the road, but at this point, the predominant system is 16. And to eliminate that overlap between the two, Lot 15.01 gets shorted a little bit.
And, and so the line between 1501 and 16 gets moved toward 1501 by a few inches?
Well, it goes from zero at Emmett to 2.42 feet in the rear. So, you know, it, it's a progressive kind of thing, that's why this is 9.4 as the front yard setback in the front of the house and 8.4 at the rear of the house.
Mr. Hollos, is it fair to say that it's not a matter of really trying to reconcile the two, you have to pick one system or the other?
Right.
And we're essentially going with the system that 16's description was based on?
Correct, and which is, seems to be the predominant system for that block.
For the block, yeah. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I like the, I like the notion that we're keeping the homeowner or the property owner at Lot 16 whole and, and use that as the mechanism to make the determination on what needs to change. And I appreciate the fact that the applicant is saying, whatever we have to do, we'll take the hit on our side of the property. I think that's a very reasonable thing to do. I do have a question, however, about the hedge that was removed. So in the interest of keeping that property owner whole on Lot 16, does that individual, he or she, want the hedge replaced?
I can address that actually, as you know, the owner, who I believe is here this evening, I believe Ms. Anderson's actually here, but she has consented to this application and part of our agreement with her was that she would be compensated for any issues like that, as well as for the cost of her surveying. And we have also agreed to do what would be necessary to make sure that she has appropriate buffering, so
Okay, perfect.
All of that is already in place.
Excellent, thank you.
She was represented by counsel in that as well.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm just want to follow up on that real quick. So the, so there's a, the hedges will either be replaced or there's been some monetary compensation or both?
It'll be both.
Does that have to be a condition of our approval, Steve?
Well, the, it's a private agreement.
It's a private agreement, okay.
So
I, I just want the property owner at Lot 16 to be whole.
It's probably best if, as, since the consent was provided, that we just recognize that the consent was provided and allow the private parties to deal with their private agreement.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Anything else?
Any of our professionals?
Mr. Chairman, I had a
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Quillen.
So this is not really germane to this application, and I, so I don't want to spend much time on it, but I'm just curious, I'm a little concerned about these different bearing systems within a single block. Is this a relatively commonplace?
It's really not uncommon, what's, what seems to be the, the uncommon thing, and this is that there's a, a degree difference. I mean, you can have different system, but as long as the interior angles of the lots are the same, then, then the, the lot would be, they would fit. But in this case, because one's different by a degree, that's why you get, you know, you start here at zero and you end up with 2.42 feet in the rear.
So the system that's in place for Lot 16 is predominant in this block, but the system that was in place for Lot 15 exists in some other lots as well?
That's correct.
So there will, there will be, there may be some other disputes down the road.
There'd be a possibility, but yeah, at that point, there may be fences and things like that that everyone can agree to. There'd be a possibility, but yeah, at that point, there may be fences and things like that that everyone can agree to. I mean, we're, you see, there's a fence along this property line with um, with lot fifteen and that's not being touched in this case.
Okay, as I say, it's not germane to what we're discussing tonight, but it just causes me to be concerned. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
The.
Yes.
I'd like to move to grant the uh application.
Oh, do we have to hear? We, we haven't had.
We haven't had.
All the questioning, let alone.
Oh, excuse me, we need the public's comment, sorry. I'm moving too fast, moving too fast.
No, I, yeah, I know that Mr. Quillen, I might ask if any of our board professionals have any, have any comments?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Warner.
Just want to double check. The uh, an excellent TCC memo was done, we have the consent of the applicant. Uh, and uh, we have had the explanation of the various variances. Uh, the location of the vinyl fence has been shown on lot fifteen oh one uh, to Mr. Phillips and Mr. Slate's uh, uh, approval, so that's good. And uh, and any uh, are there, has there been full compliance with the twenty fourteen approval otherwise? Maybe the applicant can speak to the status of compliance. And if so, it's full compliance. Whenever we have a prior approval, I always like to make sure that it's fully compliant. To the extent it's not being modified by this potential.
Mr. Hallis, are you aware of anything that we're not compliant with?
No, I'm, I'm not aware, because we started out with that minor subdivision and then we kind of got this glitch um going into the project.
Other than the possible two point eight inch discrep- possible difference in the, with the survey.
I guess it, it really dealt with the, you know, the plans and the construction activities, you know, being pursuant to our hours as required. Presumably those were complied with. If there was a development fee applicable, presumably it was paid for um, the uh, uh, and compliance with various environmental regulations. So unless our county representatives are aware of some non-compliance, I guess we have to, we should assume compliance.
We would certainly not object to a condition that those conditions continued unless they've been changed, obviously.
If there's an approval, that will be in there.
That's right. I don't think that, yeah.
Um, the site inspection report and the fire officials report both have no questions or concerns, so I guess we're okay there. And uh, so I have nothing further, thank you.
And uh, no further questions from the board or professionals? So if, does the, any members of the public, yes?
Yeah.
Yes, questions for this witness? It's the time for questions. I guess, no, seeing, seeing none. Then we have time for public comment on the application in general, not necessarily, not comment on the application. I see none, um, I guess we can close the public comment period then. Oh, yes. Please step to the microphone, name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Pamela Watson. My address is two Corey Road, Unit D, Morris Township. I received a notice about this and I was wondering why I received a notice. Because when I did get it, I did not know anything of what it was talking about. And then I thought it was something on Emmett Avenue. It isn't a two hundred.
Okay, yes.
Uh, ma'am, whenever there is a application of this nature, uh, the applicant is obligated to send formal notice like you received to any property owner within two hundred feet of the boundary of any lot that's at issue in the case. So your property, despite not being on Emmett Avenue, is still within two hundred feet of either lot fifteen point oh one and or lot sixteen. And we had taken a list from the tax assessor who tells us who we have to notify. So somehow you fell within that two hundred foot radius.
All right, so then there was obviously twelve more, because I didn't know if any of my neighbors had received this.
Right, there were.
Fourteen homeowners in that.
We sent, as you may have heard in the beginning, we sent out forty two, except it should have been forty three.
Right, I did.
Uh, notices of those approximately five or six were utilities and the county planning board. Uh, all the rest were neighbors such as yourself.
Okay, well, then after listening to what was being said, because I did have question as to what exactly was the issue? And I see that the issue was the size of the lots and the variants that were, why there were variances um being requested. And I understand now that the size of the lot that was taken in two thousand fourteen did not match what was taken recently in twenty twenty.
Right, as Mr. Hallis explained, there's essentially two different bearing systems that surveyors follow. Uh, and somehow this neighborhood, part of it followed one, part of it followed another.
Right.
Uh, so in order to prevent Ms. Anderson from being harmed in any way by us following the opposite system that was used for hers, uh, we've asked this board to allow us to amend our dimensions to fit and be consistent with hers.
With hers, okay, so that in, in this particular approval is that the survey line for lot sixteen is going to be remained and refunded and reimbursed and replaced?
Right, the line between fifteen oh one and sixteen is going to be moved uh slightly towards fifteen point oh one, it makes fifteen point oh one a little narrower and leaves sixteen, Ms. Anderson's lot, exactly as it's always been.
And uh, the bushes that were torn down are going to be either replaced or reimbursed.
It's probably a combination of the two, right?
Okay, that was my question, I just thought I was a lot further away than two hundred feet, that's all. So that's why I came to find out where I got it, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Any discussion from the, from the board members?
I second Ms. Murphy's motion.
I'd like to move again.
Mr. Alessio will second, yes?
While we vote, Mr. Chairman, if you indulge me, I can uh, repeat what I understand the motion to be with the conditions.
Yeah, well, certainly, yes.
Uh, a motion to approve the minor subdivision lot line adjustment with the five variances as stated. A lot area for the subject lot to be reduced to seven thousand two hundred thirty nine square feet. Lot width of front yard setback to be reduced to forty nine point one eight feet. Uh, lot width at front yard setback plus forty feet to be reduced to forty eight point five three feet. Uh, side yard setback, eight point four feet, whereas ten feet is required. And combined side yard setback, eighteen point five feet, whereas twenty feet is required, correct? Uh, along with all conditions, including but not limited to uh, the condition as previously stated that the applicant will provide prior to any adoption of, of the resolution of this approval, uh, the appropriate waiver, uh, if the board so pleases, uh, the waiver form uh, to be subject to my review and approval, uh, in the, as far as content is concerned. The uh, as well as the consent was already provided. Uh, so the only other uh, condition I believe would be the usual condition uh, that all prior approvals will uh, remain, uh, the conditions of all prior approvals uh, will continue to be complied with to the extent not inconsistent with this approval. Uh, I don't believe there are any other conditions. And so that would be, I, as I understand it, the motion that was seconded.
Does that match your understanding?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Any comments? Okay, Sonia, could you call a roll, Mr.?
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
The flowers?
Yes.
The rabbits?
Yes.
Mr. Alessio?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Van Order?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Ba?
Yes.
Thank you very much, just one housekeeping matter, who has my copy of the affidavit?
Didn't you bring them back?
I think it's over there.
No, I think.
That's right. It went up on the dais, is that the one?
But I thought, I thought I saw.
The list.
Tucked it in there, didn't even realize.
Okay.
Thank you very much, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Oops, okay. Moving on to our uh, public hearing portion has been closed, I guess, so moving on to other board matters. Uh, anything from the legislative committee?
Uh, no report tonight.
Okay, then let's move on to our discussion of the bylaws. As we talked about last month, uh, um, Mr. Warner kind of looked at what was there and added a few technical, you know, corrections based on the change in the time and the, and things. And I hope everyone had a chance to look at them. I found it very instructive, not, I don't know. I'm not aware, you know, to learn how we're supposed to be operating. So there any, I, I had one comment uh, before we go on, one other change. Again, kind of of a, of a, I believe a misprint on the right, is this one, yes. On page. Where is it? Dealt with uh, board members. Just some of the. Yes, um, yeah. Section two, colon, one dash three, order of presentation, paragraph G.
Are you talking about order of presentation?
No, uh, yes, order of presentation.
On page seven?
Uh, yes, on page seven, paragraph G, it re- says, see rule two dash two dash eight, does the procedure should be followed? There is no two dash two, I think it's meant should be two dash one or two colon one dash eight.
I marked that.
Thank you.
So.
The, yep, there was a, an earlier version. We uh, we, we put this together years ago, it's, it's constantly updated, but also there are a few different versions. Uh, I think we referred to them as the short version, the long version, and the medium version. There's so, uh, that, that must have been why. Um, but we did, of course, I hope everybody got the blue line version to make it a little easier um to, to follow along. Most of the changes that were made up to this point related, I think, to the seven P M. start, earlier stop time and what have you. I will say just the uh, it is a requirement under the municipal land use law that boards have bylaws and that they adopt bylaws annually. Oftentimes boards either don't frankly, or if they do, they just kind of keep going with the old version, if you will. I candidly like the fact that we look at them each year um, because we have new board members and it's a good refresher, I think, for continuing board members to go through the procedural aspects of the rules, so they coincide with municipal land use law to a large extent. But also I, I think it's helpful for new board members uh, to, as a learning tool. So, uh, which, everyone knows my opinion, you could never learn too much.
Mr. Bai, I have a.
Yes, Mr.
A question, actually. I um, had lunch at the Governor's Housing Conference with an attorney who represents various other municipalities. Planning Board, as Planning Board Attorney, and um, he mentioned that he found, he'd seen oftentimes in uh, bylaws, something that speaks to um, public comment and public questioning that provides the guidelines for how long and to avoid repetition, essentially in, in respect of everyone's time, including the applicants and the professionals that work for the, the municipality and the board. Um, I just wondered if that was something that you also uh, see in other bylaws for other, and maybe you don't work for other municipalities? Or maybe we're one of many, I don't know.
You're one of many, but you're my most favorite. And my hometown, so.
Okay, so I, I don't have any language for that, just that, that lunch that I had. Um, you know, where that was described to me as being very helpful um, for everyone understanding that.
The chair has the right to stop someone from speaking, that's.
There's something about repetitious and disorderly testimony.
The board may exclude irrelevant, immaterial, unduly repetitious evidence and or disorderly testimony. Those have the power to limit.
I'm, I'm wondering, and it's just a suggestion, uh, you know, perhaps for the future years, uh, that, you know, it's a, a, an actual timeframe uh, for comments that could also have some flexibility. But um, I, I know other planning boards that are a little more mindful of everyone's time in terms of having at least a stated timeframe they can refer to. I don't know if that's appropriate for the bylaws, that's a question.
Yeah, no, no, it's a excellent question, if I may answer. The, the, and, and the answer is, is while there's no specific MLUL provisions and there's guidance in the Cox, Koenig Treatise and elsewhere, um, it's really the discretion of the board. The board may wish to think of it. Be careful with setting precise guidelines, the flexibility is important, as you point out, with number Van Order, because you want to be able to, it's, it's often dependent upon uh, the magnitude of the application, how many members of the public there are, the time available, et cetera. So you certainly want the flexibility generally recognized to be in the hands, if you will, of the chair, who often will put it in the hands of the board as a whole, and it's, which is a good democratic process, in my opinion. Um, but so i- if it would be in there, my advice would be that the flexibility be left there. And the types of things that are mentioned in here already are generally what in the Treatise, particularly the Cox Treatise is, is, is is pointed out, you know, no repetition, uh, uh, that type of thing. Um, when you get to the point of a three minute or five minute limit per person or something along those lines.
Five would be welcome.
The, they, that, I would just say, I would just caution that that should have flexibility in the rules or else you're stuck with that and it could be problematic.
I guess my question would be, could you, could we put something in there in the wording that would refer to, has the discretion to set timelines?
Mm-hmm.
Because that is not specific, you know, it's not clear that that's included under those, that phrasing.
I.
Without putting a fixed one in there, so that we could.
Absolutely.
Right.
The uh, it's uh, you always, you, you have that right, but it never hurts to spell that right out, uh, and that discretion out.
Somebody challenges that, you never know.
Uh, yeah, yeah, there, there's support in the case law, uh, but, but yes, the by, doesn't hurt to have it in the bylaws as well. We, we, if the board wishes, we could put something together that in our opinion has the requisite flexibility, but also has the requisite teeth, for lack of a better term, to, to, and to help support uh, any determination, which no doubt would be reasonable by the board and the chair as to what limitations it would be in any particular case.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms.
In the, in the past, um, we have from time to time provided along with the agenda for the meeting, a short handout that, that specified the, the guidance for public comment, public questioning and public comment, so it's, it's available to people who come. It's, it's um, it, it's good to have it in the bylaws, of course, but, but it's more readily understood if it's available to members of the public who, as they're picking up the agenda, can also pick up a, a single page that gives you some guidance. So I, I would like to suggest that we have something like that as a standard that we can have available at every one of our meetings, a, a description of, of how the questioning goes first and then the comments go second and so on. So people can kind of consume that uh, as they're sitting in the audience and then it helps guide their actions and behavior throughout the course of the meeting. So I'll just leave it at that, I think that would be very helpful.
I just want to say I support that wholly. And also think that it would be an opportunity for people to better understand what questioning means as opposed to commenting, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
We've actually used something like that in the past, but it's not a universal thing.
The, the bylaws, I'm saying, you know, if there's any kind of, you know, kind of contentious looking application coming up, I would intend to basically read those sections about how this has got to proceed.
Right.
Try to, you know, hold off, but having that, you know, a short printed version of that as a reminder would be very useful.
The public should know the process.
Yeah.
Or at least have access to it.
If, if it, number one, we're happy to put that together in a page two max. And number, uh, there's that flexibility. And number two, um, uh, in some municipalities, uh, the. And number two, in some municipalities, the municipality has chosen to put it on the website.
That would be helpful as well.
Yeah. So that's, if that's the desire of the board and or the committee, that can be done with it as well. But the first step, we'll, we'll put it together and provide it to the board to make sure the board's comfortable. And maybe what we'll do is we'll make sure there's, the Board of Adjustment also is comfortable with it. So we can all operate with the same, the rules are no different, should be no different for applications for development before the joining Board of Adjustment as they, as for planning.
And you said there was something like this in the past?
We've used something like that in the past, but it's not been universally used. And I don't even know where the original version has ended up, if it's, you know, somewhere in our files. You know. Usually when we're having a application that's going to be lengthy or contentious in some way, that's very helpful to have that. But it hasn't been consistently used and I think we should consistently use it.
Yeah, I think, I think it would solve frustrations on our behalf and the public's behalf and not knowing what is the actual practice of procedures.
And I think particularly if there's objectives council and teams of objectors that want to be heard, we have a process here.
Yep.
And that would be a good place to have this.
Yeah.
I'll take that as a direction and we'll put that together. We'll make sure a Board of Adjustment Council is comfortable with it as well and, and get it to the board and look forward to it being, among other things, perhaps on the website as well, so everybody benefits.
That would be good.
Mr. Chairman, I have quite a few comments and questions.
Yeah, okay.
So I can go through them and the easiest thing for me would be to go through them in page order. But I can go through, I can try to go through them in priority order if people would prefer.
Page orders.
So on page one. The section called attendance, one dash two. The last sentence says, this rule shall be automatically amended by operation of law in the event that the above standards are made more strict prior pursuant to amendment.
That's if the law changes, yeah.
So this has to do with. With when. Basically, when one of us is kicked off the board.
Well, forty-eight, nine dash twelve point one, if and when that changed, that's what it currently says, has said for a while. And there's a procedure if it comes to that point where the board can make a recommendation to government body. You can proceed from there.
So why does it say made more strict as opposed to just saying modified? This rule should be automatically amended by operation of law in the event that the above standards are modified.
You might not want it automatically. Lessened. It's up to the board. But usually, usually boards like to abide by whatever the statutory requirement is. And if it gets stricter, you know, that's generally what they want. But if it gets, if it goes in the opposite direction, that you're not necessarily prohibited from keeping it as strict as it was previously. That said, it could, it could say, if it's modified, it is one direction or the other.
Well, yeah, you know, yeah, I mean, that's the question of if it's modified, so it's stricter than you want to be in compliance, so that automatically changes. If it's modified as, you know, anything relaxed, you're not, you don't have any issues with continuing as you are. You may want to review it and relax them yourselves, but.
Doesn't mean you can't change.
Doesn't, right.
And then in the next paragraph on office location and location of meetings, it says that applications will be available for public inspection between eight thirty and four thirty PM. And I just wanted to make sure that that's actually okay. Is that all right with the engineering department?
That's always been the preference.
Okay. Then on the next page, at the very bottom of the page. Two, five, C. It says that the recording secretary will make a transcription record of the proceedings of each hearing. And. Calls to be mailed or otherwise delivered to each member of the board, true copies of the minutes. Do we want this? Is this feasible?
Yeah, I mean, the whole issue of minutes is kind of, because we don't, we haven't, you know, had formal minutes. We have the actual recordings. Which are required, you know, later on, it talks about the minutes are a summary of the meetings, but actual transcripts or recordings are required for, you know, anything recent, but.
And then we had the, we had the person who, we had the person who was doing the word, you know, transcribing with the Red Bulls. I mean, that was a, was that something they paid for or?
They paid for that.
Got it.
They paid for that for their own purposes, if and when they felt they needed it. The. If the question is, should the board have minutes? The answer is yes. The, so. We have been going, obviously, through a period of time in which we have a full recordation and people could see here both, essentially any time they want. That is more than is mandated by the MLUL. The MLUL is, just mandates minutes.
It does.
Yeah, as far as being circulated and kept. The. I guess the question becomes, does the board wish to continue to get minutes?
We don't get them.
And it, does the board wish to get minutes in a timely fashion and continue to get them in a timely fashion? Or does the board wish to simply rely on the fact that there's a audio video recordation? If anybody wants it, they can.
I have a question on that. Does the video supersede the need for minutes? Or does the law require at the very least minutes? Are we going above and beyond by not doing minutes but providing the recording?
That's an arguable interpretation, but you just said the latter. The, simply put, is it okay that we haven't been doing minutes, but we have the audio video? And I think the answer is, yes, it's okay. I can do the research to find out if definitively we are comfortable, but, you know, but that's my understanding, that's my interpretation of the MLUL.
Mr. Chairman? So I think we, Sonia, correct me if I'm wrong, we used to have written minutes and it was a pain in the, you know what? Because she had to transcribe everything that was said into a written format. And, and sometimes it took a while to, to get that transcription documented. It's my opinion that the video of the meeting is a complete record of the meeting and, and for all intents and purposes eliminates the need for a written transcript, which, which is a holdover, frankly, from the good old days where we didn't have the ability to record the meeting. So I, even though the MLUL maybe has not kept up, I think the fact that we're providing a full recording of the meeting with, with everything that transpired is, you know, in my view, that's meeting the spirit of the requirement to, you know, show people what went on.
If not more than.
It's probably, probably better than written minutes because sometimes you don't catch all the nuances of what transpires.
I have a couple of comments. The, I remember some of those minutes from the old days. They were page after page detailed and really onerous to create. But I could see a place for a much shorter version, which what I would, what I would recommend actually would be sort of take the agenda and just, it's basically like have the minutes align with the agenda and say what the board did or did not do. So on ours, resolution for Sante's, the board approved. Resolution for the Spring Brook, the board approved, you know, and then the application discussion, the board approved it. And, and, and that would provide a written record, which I do think is important. And for many reasons, and one of which is there, there, there is an action on our sustainable jersey application for public engagement in planning and zoning. It's a big action. We do every single thing on there except minutes. And if we had that very abbreviated minute document that I just mentioned, we would, we would get, you know, it's a big point action. So, and plus, I think that's worthwhile because to go back and read, you know, see the whole video, it takes an hour or three hours. And I mean, it's good if you want to drill down and get the nuances of what happened and what was discussed. But if you just want the real top line basics, I think the minute format that I just described would be manageable. I don't think that's, you know, really time, you know, sensitive to, or time consuming to do. And I think it would be worthwhile, in my opinion.
I have a question about that because if someone misses a meeting and is looking at an abbreviated set of minutes, I don't think that's sufficient to say that I, that I know what went on in a meeting.
Well, we could specify that.
We'd still have to go back and view the video.
Absolutely.
Right.
May I weigh in from the legal perspective?
Yes.
And perhaps practical, two things.
Quick question before you do.
Sure.
Do the minutes have to be reviewed and voted upon at every meeting afterwards?
Yes.
Yes.
We're actually adding work for ourselves.
Well.
So that means there could be questions about the minutes and then there could be additional questions about the minutes. Just as well, just making sure that we all understand that.
One thing, aside from the fact that I happen to personally think it's an excellent suggestion by Committeewoman Wilson, is the fact that I. A couple of the boards that I am still fond of, but they are not my hometown board. They are not my favorite board. They do minutes precisely in the fashion that Committeewoman Wilson just described. They, I know of two offhand that I could think of that take the agenda and if you're not careful and you don't see the word minutes on top, you think it's the agenda. But you see minutes and then you realize it's the agenda and ninety percent of the work has been done already because there's not that much more new and different, approved, maybe the vote, what have you. Might be things that some of us, Sonia, may already be scratching out by hand on the agenda per se. So it may not, I'm not going to speak to how much is time consuming for someone else when they're doing it. That's for them to decide, I guess, but, but not a bad idea. That, what Board Member Murphy just referred to, being qualified to vote on an application that is continuing from hearing to hearing, the MLUL is very specific there. You have to read the whole transcript or view the whole recording or listen to the whole tape or, as we have the pleasure of doing now, we get the audio video in one fell swoop. You got to hear the whole, see and hear the whole here. That's a different, that's different than minutes.
I, I like Counselor, Counselor Wilson's idea. I think that's, and it seems, you know, fairly simple and straightforward, just a straightforward, I don't know what happened to that or even if they weren't heard and they were continued to another meeting. So somebody could see, could, could see that. I had originally thought of something like somebody going through the video and putting the timestamp, putting a timestamp at when things happened. But that requires somebody to go through. I mean, it's easier than transcribing every word that, you know, took place, but it's, you know, or, or just, you know, summarizing all of the discussion. But I, I think this serves kind of much the same person, purpose. At least it would tell somebody, look at this as, okay, I should go look at the, at the videotape or instead of the recording, rather than having to go through the whole thing and find out that, you know, oh, they never got to that, which would kind of be frustrating. Yeah.
Would it be reasonable to include in this abbreviated minutes, just, you know, which experts testified, you know, on what subjects? Just a very basic, not, not even.
Getting more complicated.
Trying to figure out like how far to go without creating too much work, you know, it does, it could just be, you know, their, their engineer testified, their traffic expert testified, not even as to what specifically, but just who testified.
How does that add?
Because then, because then you know if you're, if you want to review what happened in the meeting, you can look at the minutes and, and kind of figure out, oh, which video do I need to watch? You know, if you're, especially like if you were looking back at Del Barton, you know, and you're looking at, you know, seventeen meetings and, okay, and I want to, and I want to figure out, okay, the, the traffic guy, I want to hear everything that the traffic guy had to say. You would know which meetings you need to look at. You don't have to hunt through, you know, I've got a stack of DVDs from Del Barton that took, you know.
It takes a long time.
And of course, to vote on it, we had to do that.
Right.
But if you're a member of the public or something like that, you know, I think that could add a lot of value.
So that's, that would require timestamps.
No, 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 no. You would know, you would know, oh, I need to, okay, the February twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen meeting, I, that's.
Oh, I see, so you're not directing somebody toward the video.
No, this is the person. Testified at this date. Planner testified.
Right.
Rest of the application continued to another date.
Well, it does, it does help us with sustainable jersey, so that's always a, that's always a plus. But it does, what we want to do is not make this a heavy lift because then we're going to set ourselves up for, you know, confusion and or failure. So I'm of the minded, I'd like to see what comes of any research you said, if we're coming, if we're meeting the law by providing to the public the, the video testimony. And then, and then take this, this conversation up once we have a definitive kind of answer because we might have to go back to the minutes if that's what, that's what you find in looking at the case law.
My, my opinion is that even if the law does say that the video suffices, I think there's a lot of value in just having the shortened, I call it the bullet point minutes for just like exactly what you're talking about.
The annotated agenda.
What do you think, Sonia? Get your thoughts on it. And it goes back to the days, you know, we really got bogged down and I'll say Rick Hahn wanted detailed stuff in there.
It's onerous.
You know, it was, you know, you'd have to listen to the meeting, you know, there was hours, you know, that Sonia would spend doing that. And then I would spend, you know, probably an hour, you know, reviewing, you know, them just to make sure, you know, because Sonia doesn't always understand all the, you know, the concepts or the testimony that's being provided by certain experts, you know, and then we'd clean it up, but, you know.
And by that point, my resolution was drafted and you didn't have to do it anyway.
I mean, we really got bogged down, you know, with the detail that he wanted on that. I mean, what's your thoughts, you know, on a kind of scaled back one? I mean, it just seems.
It's really an expanded agenda is what it is.
It is.
And I can.
Would it help if Steve, if you shared with the board?
I could send you.
Give us an example.
What another unnamed town does. Absolutely. And I will answer the question legally whether we're a hundred percent on firm ground or not. And I will send a sample to Sonia and the board, should you so desire. What I will tell you, though, is what we're talking about here is basically taking this, which is on a Word document, I'm assuming.
Yes.
I, and I'm picking up the wrong one, it happens to be the reorg one, but, but, you know, and then adding, as was described, either just some what happened by way of approved and a vote maybe, or going so far as to say enlist the witnesses and maybe the exhibits. I've seen that done and stopping there without getting into the content.
I would skip the exhibit.
We don't need these.
Whatever people want from the menu of options, but, yeah.
I mean, I have done research of the towns and I have seen. I'd say Farring, for example, okay, it was a two page, I said, oh, wouldn't that be wonderful? Two page or page and a half.
Yeah, that's.
One page.
I have done minutes that consisted of almost ten pages.
I've seen them, yes, I remember.
We wouldn't want that.
That's why I am behind in my minutes, okay, because it's time consuming. I do everything for both boards.
Right.
Absolutely everything, including speaking with the attorneys, the applicants. Sometimes I have to stick with the applicants and help them with the application and all that. Okay, so it's time consuming.
It is.
Quite frankly, I don't.
And I saw those, those minutes, two pages, I said, I wish I could just do two pages. And I saw those, those minutes, two pages. I said, I wish I could just do two pages.
I think you could do it in one.
Well, the length, the, the, the length of the agenda.
The agenda is too.
You don't want to.
And, and you know, frankly, for, I don't want to have to get, I mean, I, you get, you know, 15 pages of minutes. I don't want to have to sit down and I feel obligated to review them in order to vote on the, you know. You don't, so I, yeah, right.
Chairman, he wanted like more detail of what took place at the meeting and that's what I was doing.
Right. But we have the recordings now. There is.
The recordings were not in place at that time.
Sonia, would it be feasible to do something just a little bit beyond the agenda that's already done and just add a little bit as was described? Is that something that would end up, if, if it's a one page agenda, it may end up one and a half pages. It's a one and a half page agenda, it may end up two pages, two and a half pages.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on putting something together.
Seeing some examples would be helpful, I think.
Like when there's public question or comment, you don't even have to list the, the, their names and addresses over there, just public comment.
Yes, public comment.
That's it, that's it.
Yep.
Public comment, period.
Yeah.
Not Patricia Collins.
Right.
She's still on, oh, she's off now.
So for these bylaws, uh, I see.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
I, I suggest for these bylaws, we'd be vague about all this and we just, in the section that we were looking at, section C at the bottom of page two, we just strike the first line. Don't say the recording secretary is going to make a transcription record. Strike everything in that line. And then in the second line, say, keep summary minutes of proceedings in each meeting, et cetera. I'm sorry, we're, because we do have a transcription, that is the tape.
Yeah, that, that is the transcription record.
That's the transcription record. I think really all this is saying is, is have a tape and have some sort of minutes and, and it ends up being an agenda that's a little bit supplemented, then we've covered it.
And Kathy gets 15 points.
Can be done with no changes.
Yeah. I'm even.
Jim, maybe that you won't be on your case for something else that, because you got 15 points that way.
You'll be making my day. I, I.
No, I'm.
No.
Um, I would be happy, I, I have a certain, you know, I, I haven't seen other towns do this, but I have a certain like idea about it. I, if you want, I'm, I would be happy to do an example of this meeting.
We'll take care of it. Thanks for your help.
Thank you. Just offering to help.
George.
George, yes. Okay. On page four, line two, I had a question about what a secular day is. Is that everything except the Saturday or Sunday? Close to a non-secular day. On the next succeeding secular day or such other day as the board may select. I thought that, oh, oh, meaning it's not a legal holiday.
Or religious holiday.
Or, uh, well, or religious.
He's thinking of it in terms of religion, probably.
Yeah. If the regular meeting falls on a legal holiday, such meeting shall be held on the next succeeding non.
Oh, just business?
Non. Holiday, what a business day.
Can you say business, business days anymore? Because, I mean, you could say federal because federal gives off for everything, but, but most big companies now, they give you floating holidays because everybody wants to take off for different holidays based on their religion.
It would be the business day of, of the township.
As defined by the township.
That's a fine, that's, that's clear.
So, so instead of secular, it should be a business day or then, or a day as chosen by the board. You know, secular to me has a religious connotation.
Yeah, we'll take secular out, we'll replace with business.
Yeah, that would be funny.
Township business day.
Oh, sorry, township business day.
Okay, so now we come to my big comment, which is starts at the bottom of page four, electronic attendance. You could probably guess. This would be one of my comments. So, I mean, I can make my suggestion and we can continue and we can return to this if you want, but my suggestion is that the last sentence of this section be deleted, which starts on the next page. Such electronic attendance may only be utilized on matters other than applications for development and then, uh, et cetera. So this severely limits electronic attendance by board members.
So.
Probably invalidates.
So George, that was in there because we used to have a, we used to prohibit people from participating electronically. You couldn't even call in and participate. You had to be physically there. Then COVID happened. So, so everything went up in the air. So that's why that, that sentence is there is because it was originally prohibited back in the day.
No, I, I understand their historic reasons, but I just think that hybrid formats and remote attendance is going, is going to be with us forever now, so I recommend getting rid of that. But I understand Mr. Warner is going to have some things to say. You want me to just go on? No, no, don't. I'm, I'm actually not going to have much to say for change, right? The, 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 uh, because it's, uh, other than if and when there's something that legally is required or is prohibited, it's, it's the board's discretion.
So there are no specific prescriptions, prescriptions in the MLUL on?
The, well, there, there's, there's guidance, uh, in treatises, the, the MLUL provided before, uh, COVID, that, that, uh, electronic communication was an option for board members, but it was supposed to be the exception, not the rule, uh, only if necessary for quorum and only if, uh, yes. The, uh, and, and not recommended for hearings on development applications, unless the equipment was sufficient to, uh, literally replicate being there. Because in addition to hearing everything and seeing everything, there's a credibility determinations, in fact, that are to be made by virtue of, uh, uh, being a finder of fact on the dais that, uh, perhaps can't be made as well remotely. Let alone, uh, the layers of, uh, potential problems with any technology.
We've seen that.
Was it Aretha Franklin, who, the, the old commercial you used to listen to the, is that live or is it Memorex? Um, I'll show my age. The, the, uh, the, um, she broke the glass.
Right.
Uh, but in any event, um, so, eh, that said, eh, a, a lot of it is the discretion of the board. I know my job generally stops at what you can do and what you can't do. But that, that's was the, that's the, uh, guidance from the treatises with respect to the possibility for board members. I, I will point out, I guess, though also that there is a goose for the gander type thing. Is it, if it's good for one, then it's good for every board member. It's good for every board member. It's good for every applicant and, and their professionals, and it's good for the objective, then it's good for every member of the public. And then in essence, perhaps the exception swallows the rule, whatever the phrase is, but I'll stop there.
Well, we can make separate rules. We could say board members can do it. Members of the public, they can listen, but they can't, um, make comments, like the rule now, unless they're here. You know, we, we could make, we could make specific rules about different parties and go with that.
We've gotten grief about that. That there's different rules applied, you know, with the public saying, well, the board members are coming, why can't we ask questions remote? You know, that, that has come up, that, that's a.
I, I have a question about that. Um, and I connect this with, uh, being at the league conferences. Topic of electronic participation was talked about in a couple of sessions. And, and is it, I wanted to ask your opinion in particular. What if, this is a what if, I'm not recommending it, I'm asking a hypothetical. So what if we were to say, look, our meeting is in person right here. You got to come in if you want to make sure you're part of the meeting. As a courtesy, w- will let, you know, anyone, w- will allow people to participate remotely if they choose. If it's a, a resident and they want to, you know, offer a comment, they would have to be on video because you have to see them. I agree. There's a, you know, but, but this, I guess it would be a, something of a disclaimer, if you will. You know, saying, look, our basic meeting is here in person as a courtesy. We're letting you participate remotely, but if there's any kind of tech problem anywhere, your house here, we're not going to restart the meeting and let people know that upfront.
Kathy, you're talking about just the public, not professionals or witnesses or attorneys.
Well, I mean, to be determined, you know, I mean, we, because we had, what, we had the COVID, we had people still concerned about that. It's so ironic too, because before COVID, we had so much resistant, resistance to going to a remo, a remote format. Now, people, a lot of people really like it. I mean, it's not unanimous. People do like being in person, but there's a lot of people who like the remote, the remote format. So that, that is my question. Is that even a possibility?
There's vulnerabilities. To the extent part of my job is not simply to say what you can do, but what you have to be careful about, even if you can do it, you know, should you do it? To the extent that's part of my responsibilities, uh, I think it's in the best interest to avoid vulnerabilities. Vulnerabilities lead to reversals and other problems. So when I sit in my ivory tower that we lawyers sometimes are perceived to sit in and say how the world should be and what makes it, you know, safer and what have you, for, 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 for us to give advice to boards, I would say that, uh, if the determination has been made or will, is made, that we are having our meetings in person, uh, it is problematic to allow anyone to participate remotely without increasing the vulnerability of, of our determinations and our board work. The, uh, and in person, I think is less vulnerable than remote. And hybrid, I think frankly, is the most vulnerable because you have the dynamics of people in person and people remote, and you're trying to have it all work together equally without any glitches. So my advice, uh, would be that while conceivably you can do a lot of these different things we're talking about, in my opinion, prudence would dictate that board members and everyone else be in person if possible. And then if there is a problem with a quorum and or there's certain business, for example, that is not an application for a hearing on an application for development, it, you know, then, then, uh, where you don't have to make those credibility determinations, what have you, it's biz, sometimes referred to as the business of the board, but it's not an application hearing. Then maybe that's, you know, one exception where board members could participate without there being an increased vulnerability to the board's determinations and, and actions.
How is the Board of Adjustment operating now?
In person?
In person, yes.
I should know that, I was before them. I agree with this and I think that there are municipalities that are still doing fully remote and they're getting really good at it. And so, you know, that is working well for them. But I do think that when you try to do hybrid, it's really complicated. And to allow, you know, a board member or a professional to do it hybrid, but not the public, I think that gives us somewhat of a bad look, in my opinion. Um, and I, I wouldn't be in support of a hybrid model where we're trying to meet in person, but then we allow everybody who wants to or can't for some reason, um, to, to, I, I like the fact that we have a recording. I think that's great. And that people could, who don't necessarily want to make a comment, but want to listen in on what's going. I use that all the time in Madison, that's where I work. I listen in all the time to their planning board meetings. It's great. But, you know, I have no reason to be there to, to, um, to comment. So I think that's a great, uh, service to the public to have it recorded and have it in, in real time that you can listen to it. But I do agree that I think that the hybrid is, uh, is a real strain, uh, for, for everybody.
I'm, I'm also, I'm going to agree with that. I'm going to agree with what Mr. Warner said, simply because it's about vulnerabilities and what we want to do. Even though we've spent a lot of money upgrading our, our video system here, it's, it's not perfect. And what we want to do is certainly not be vulnerable to having to restart a meeting because somebody couldn't hear properly on, um, on their laptop or their, their computer at home or something happens with the audio here and we have to restart. So I think that protecting ourselves in that regard is, is of paramount importance.
When you say somebody, do you mean a member of the public or a member of the board?
Well, it depending on who's calling in hybrid, right? So if it's somebody who's, who has to, who has to give testimony in, in a hybrid situation, of course, um, has to give testimony or hear things. We, we just don't want to have somebody to say, well, you know, my computer crapped out. I can't, you know, I, I, I didn't get a chance to talk. And I think it, it's the vulnerability that really, we don't want to restart anything.
So it could be a witness.
It could be a witness or a professional.
Yeah, we.
There's always dangers in hybrid.
Yeah, we had technical problems. I, I don't know if they all occurred pre this new equipment or not, but I, I can remember we had to restart several times and one meeting was canceled even because we couldn't move forward. I mean, it was, it was kind of a, kind of a weird show, you know? So I, I tend to agree with Steve. I think that we should, if we, if we can move forward in person and make that our norm. If there are very unique situations where we can't see the quorum unless we have someone remote, I guess that could be an exception to the rule, although because that would mean we couldn't move forward and we didn't have a quorum, right?
You certainly can't do anything other than adjourn to the next scheduled day.
Right, 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 so.
Although, you know, according to the MLU, well, if people are, you know.
Right, so, so there might be the odd time where you might do something like that, but I think in person is as a, as a, as the general and typical rule, I think that's where we should.
I agree. I think in person is better. I, I will say at the, at the league conference, there were a few sessions I was at where this topic was discussed and there are definitely towns in New Jersey that do allow residents to participate remotely on, on in-person meetings. So it's not, you know, prohibited by law to do that. And you're strongly advising us against it. And, but it's, it, it's not impossible to choose to do that and many towns have. And I, I understand the vulnerability, but I also feel that if we are very clear upfront, you know, our meeting is taking place in person and as a courtesy, letting members of the public participate remotely, um, I would be willing to consider that. But I'm not going to, you know, it doesn't sound like there's an appetite for that.
When you say participate, you mean just listen, right?
Well, people can already listen.
Right, but, uh, yeah, but having them ask questions, I think that's problematic, really problematic.
I, I have a real minority view on this. I think that it's a mistake to not at least allow yourself the freedom to allow hybrid meetings with full participation by board members and the public. And I would urge the, the, this board not to adopt bylaws that frees you out of the chance to allow yourself to change the rules prospectively. So, uh, I strongly recommend that the board not adopt bylaws saying all meetings have to be in person, board members have to appear in person and members of the public have to appear in person if they want to make comments or ask questions. Because we don't.
That's not in here now.
It's not in there now. Perhaps what should be put in there is something that says that the chair can establish rules for, for a meeting or that the board can establish rules for a meeting with respect to these matters. But, um, if you think about what's happened in the last three years, there have been a lot of unpredictable events with respect to disease. We have, uh, a population now too that is very heterogeneous with respect to how they feel about disease exposure. You still see a lot of people with masks on. You still, I still talk to a lot of people who say, I don't want to attend an indoor meeting where there are more than a few people. So I, I think it's, uh, it, it's really not a good idea to act as though everything is going to be just hunky-dory going forward.
I guess that kind of goes along with the, you know, early discussions of flexibility. I I am, and it seems like that we could leave that in, that possibility in the bylaws. Operate in-person. Except under certain circumstances, the may, the board may vote to change, you know, for some, for whatever reason, may vote to change and allow remote, but that would be like across the board, in certain circumstances, under
Chairman's question for attorney.
Yes.
If we were to allow the option to have hybrid at, let's say, the board's discussion and approval, could an applicant who did not have that opportunity and be denied have grounds to come after us within a, I'm going to say, not an objection, all the way all to legally come after us and say, you had a hybrid meeting for this, but you didn't have a hybrid for mine, and therefore people were not allowed to participate? So I mean, by having both, do we put ourselves in jeopardy?
Whenever you have discretionary choices, there's always, there's always potential. Right now, those three quote-unquote distinct options are currently still legal options. In-person, entirely remote, entirely hybrid. If you're going to be flipping back and forth, then I think you know the answer to the question. And anybody who doesn't like what, anybody who's disgruntled is going to point to anything, including, you went this way that time and that, and a different way my time, and I'm going to blame that. And there's always going to be somebody who's disgruntled because if there's an applicant and an objector, either the applicant's going to be disgruntled, or the objector, or sometimes both. But if it's a conditional approval that has a lot of conditions, nobody's going to be happy perhaps, but.
Professional would not have the ability perhaps to come in here and present. The equity issue has more to do with the elderly who can't get here and have a concern about illness. The equity is that those who can attend should or will or whatever, those who cannot attend, the equity consideration allows them to participate remotely. The problem with that is, how do you determine who has an equity need?
Who's the arbiter of record? We have a chance read division in our court system, and that their sole responsibility, all those judges, to decide what's equitable, and they're busy.
Yeah, we can't decide that.
And you get different decisions as to what's equitable. And they're appealed, and some of them are reversed. Different judges tell you differently, what's equitable is different. I think once you open it up to anybody, if you're not opening it up to everybody,
We can't decide who has an equity need.
No. I wouldn't recommend.
We shouldn't.
The, that's vulnerability. The, I think, before we in-person was obviously the norm pre-COVID, and I know we're not post-COVID, and the world is different every day than it was the day before, that's for sure. The, that'll be different tomorrow, guarantee that. The, well, you know what the options are, and it's for the board to decide as to how to proceed.
One quick question, I guess, would be, what happens if, you know, there is another, like, March of
2020.
2020.
Well, you already, first of all, these bylaws can be changed at any time.
Okay.
Second of all, to the extent there's flexibility within the bylaws, the chair and the board can exercise that flexibility and discretion. And certainly if there's, whatever happens on this, on this earth, if, when the laws change, they'll have an impact on these bylaws.
But even, but, yeah, I'd even say we went with all in-person meeting, both, you know, in-person completely, and something did come up that made it difficult for that, we could change the rules.
You don't have to wait for the law to change.
We don't have to wait for, you know, for the law to change, we could do it ourselves, at least under the current laws.
Exactly, exactly. If you were to recommend a change that violated the current law, it's my job to tell you.
Right. Well, I guess, then, I mean, I, you know, I would prefer going all in-person, I think, at this point. I think it's really convenient, it's very nice as a board member not to have to be here and be able to participate. But I think if you do that, then you get into problems with not allowing the public. And, and I, the whole hybrid mix, I think, doesn't, is a problem. I'd rather not have, you know, it's, it opens up other problems with the public answering question, or calling in questions, both technology, you know, technically, and just procedurally, you know, the time and the time it takes. So I would prefer if somebody has something to say, that they show up, and if they can't, they can have a surrogate ask the questions, you know? I mean, that's not like those questions can't be asked, they're, I mean. So I guess I would be in favor of moving all the in-person.
Should we, is something that requires a vote?
Well, what George suggested on page five was eliminating that, that one sentence. And, and on the top of page five.
That would, deleting that sentence would allow board members to participate remotely.
Correct.
How about for traveling for extended periods of time?
Yeah.
Which is a possibility.
It is.
We have alternates for.
Yeah, so we have alternates for, and that's why we We do have by statute borrowing provisions as well.
We've never, I've never seen us do that.
Oh, I have. I've served on the Board of Adjustment.
You did?
Yeah, for two years, as a matter of fact.
You're kidding?
Yeah.
The borrowing provisions, just to be clear, generally come into effect for conflicts of interest. You can't just borrow because, hey, we're short a few tonight. Send over a few, you know, so in fairness. But sometimes you have a combination of absent, absences and conflicts that result in the board not having a sufficient quorum. And at least with respect to those conflicts, you can borrow from the other board to, not only can you, it's statutory, statutorily prescribed, in essence, you're supposed to.
So if a board member is traveling or is sick, or they can listen in electronically, but they cannot participate in the discussion of an application? That's what this says, right?
They can't participate, right, yeah. If it were carried to another day, I guess, then conceivably.
And they see the tape?
Well, they might not even have to listen to the tape if they listen to the thing live.
Alternates to cover when someone's not available. Like if you're traveling, that's when
And you only need five for a quorum.
Right.
Yeah, that's true, too, and actually for the planning board, you only have majority votes. The zoning board, with the D-variances, of course, at times need five, no matter how many are there. But, yeah, we have, we could all do the math. So between alternates and borrowing, you know, you conceivably have two to three times the number of people you need to hear an application and decide it. But it's, again, discretion at this point, it's the board to decide.
So, yeah.
George's scenario about, you know, a member of the public that, you know, wouldn't want to come in, imagine this is packed, you know, it's Red Bulls or Del Barton or whatever, and, and maybe there's a new variant that is going around, and, you know, maybe somebody's immune compromised, and their doctor says, you know, it'd be stupid to go sit in that, in that room. Could we, we've had before, could we have, again, kind of like an overflow room? You know, somewhere where, you know, it would be, you know, the monitors up and whatever precautions taken, something like that, it wouldn't be that many people. Could we, I guess, address George's concern by doing that? And, but, I don't know, not allow, not go to full hybrid.
We have, the large conference room has the video.
Okay, so that's, would that
This person still would not participate, though, because they're in a separate room.
Unless they came in here with their mask on, came to the thing. Yeah, we've done that, and we've done that, I, I, boards I represent elsewhere have done that as well. And indeed, that's something that was done pre the current pandemic, when there were overflows. In the olden days, it was, hey, where's the high school gym? Everybody trek over there, you know, because it was bigger, whatever, for capacity reasons. Not to equate the two, but the point is, is that if you need more room, there are conceivable ways of doing it, perhaps. But again, that's
Mr. Quillan, does that, does that sound a little bit more palatable?
I guess it's slightly helpful. So what I would prefer to see is something I don't, I don't nearly have the votes for. I can clearly see that, so I don't really think it's worth talking about right now. So I would just urge that, that these bylaws give the board freedom to change the rules quickly, on the fly, rather than committing us to something in particular.
I think we could accommodate that.
Yeah.
Right, right.
The board may from time to time amend any part of these rules and regulations, et cetera. That's four colon four dash one, four colon five dash one, for good cause shown or where the strict application of any rule would cause injustice, the board may relax the requirements of any rule, et cetera, et cetera. Those are, nothing's perfect in this world. That's why there's attorneys, right, to have to rewrite things over and over. But, 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 but there are, there are, there are, there are some explicit rules to reinforce what's implicit in the rules, which is, you can change the rules. The, so, but if that helps.
Wasn't there a reference to, you have to give the board members three days' notice?
Oh, yeah, to amend the rules, yeah, so that people aren't changing the rules without the board members getting a chance to be involved.
But that's not an amendment, that's a relaxation you talked about.
Well, no, that's the amendment, three, you got to get three, three days' notice to the board members before you go changing the rules, so that all board members have a fair opportunity to be involved in the process. But the relaxation doesn't require, I guess, I don't believe, any
Relaxation gives you the flexibility.
Yeah, the flexibility to do it immediately.
But it's actually referenced in here on
They're both referenced, yeah, page 14, yeah. The amendments are the three days in advance, and the relaxation is for intensive purposes, the immediate.
Gives us flexibility.
I think, well, being aware of that is nice to know.
It is.
I mean, I think that, you know, that we can respond if we need to, and that's a possibility, I think.
Do we need, are we trying to get to a vote tonight, or we, what are we doing?
Yeah, what's the next step?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Well, there's going to be some revisions.
I'm not done, yeah, but I might have run out of my, my, the patience of the board.
No, no.
I mean, my understanding regarding whether we would vote on this tonight is that we've already, you've already stated, Mr. Warner, that you're going to work on a few updates.
Yeah, in fact, we're, we're operating under last year's rules, which I guess some, among other things, have us at 7:30, but that's okay, we're okay. The
Okay, I'm just going to, on this point.
I'll clean these up.
Do we have the sense of the board that this particular one just stays as is? And we'll be operating?
I think we have
We don't, yeah, so we don't need to contemplate any changes in this.
Talking about the electronic participation.
Right.
All right, George.
So the sentence will not be deleted?
Right. It'd just be where we will be in-person and not, unless we decide to change it at some future point for some reason.
Okay, on the same page in section 4.1.
Page five?
Yes, page five, and then I, two paragraphs down. This discussion of when the alternate serve, and I think a sentence could be added at the end of that. So the last sentence says, well, it ends with, shall serve in the place of the said disqualified or absent member. That talks about alternate number two serving if alternate number one is disqualified or absent. I think it would be good to add a sentence that says, if two or more regular members are absent or disqualified, both alternate members may serve.
There will, there shall be two alternate members, one and two, each shall retain the designation, because you got to go in order.
Yes.
Alternate members may participate, but may not vote, except if there's a disqualification. In the event of disqualification or absence, then one shall take their place, unless number one is disqualified, in which case all two shall take their place.
In the, in
One at a time conserve.
Right.
If two or more regular members are absent or disqualified.
Then they both, okay, I, I understood that to be implicit in this, but if it's not implicit, or if it's not clear enough, then we'll add a sense to make it clear that
Yeah.
Two are out, two are in.
Right.
So to speak.
The next thing I wanted to ask about, or just engage the board about a little bit, is in, it's on page eight, section one dash two, one dash seven. Testimony from board employed and other expert witnesses. The board may require expert witnesses and reports. Experts shall be qualified to the satisfaction of the board. In addition to experts for the applicant or others, the board shall have the power to engage its own independent experts.
Here they are.
And I thought Okay, is that what the reference is to?
Well, no. We want to go outside, we
We could also, yeah.
We, we can go outside and get somebody else, or somebody in addition, an expert in another
Right, for example, oftentimes, we, oftentimes, traffic experts, sound experts, et cetera. Some boards, I have personal knowledge, have set traffic, sound, architectural, what have you, experts that they bring in for applications that warrant, quote-unquote, you know, those additional experts beyond the expert, beyond your board, attorney of your board, planner of your board, engineer. And conceivably, you can go on beyond that, there's all sorts of possible experts. So it gives you that option as well.
My concern is about funding, whether the board has the ability to authorize the township to spend money.
The applicant's escrowing money.
Yeah, they're escrowing it, yeah.
All right.
It comes out of the escrow.
Environmental expert, George, or a noise consultant, they're paying for it.
Yeah, and that is in the MLU, and that's because it's a user fee system, so they understand, or at least should, coming in, that if what they are warranting the board to do requires the board to have additional experts within reason, they're paying for it, okay, as the applicant.
That's also found in the resolution. Can you appoint a professional?
Right.
That's stated on the resolution.
Yeah, that we, well, we do a specific resolution, and it says that it comes out of the escrow, yeah. But that is provided for in the MLU, applicants know that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
On page nine of section two, one dash eleven, the last sentence. So this has to do with burden of proof and whether the board is satisfied that the applicant has met its burden of proof. But if you go to the last sentence, it says, if a board member is not convinced that the applicant has satisfied its burden of proof, the board should deny the application, rather than abstain in the absence.
It's supposed to be the board member. Yeah, that, somehow the word member slipped out of there.
So, so it's not, but the board, but board members don't deny applications.
Right. Well, the board member should vote to deny the application rather than abstain.
So just if you note, though, down at two dot two, three, if you abstain, your vote, an abstention is regarded as a cent to the vote of the majority.
Yeah, that's by law.
That's by law, so, so you can abstain, but if the majority of the board votes yes, you in effect are voting yes.
Yeah, and you need to know that, I think that was a very interesting point, I like that.
And vice versa.
Yeah, and generally with the, the, if you're in a position where you don't want to vote yes or no on an application, then maybe there's a reason why you shouldn't have been hearing it in the first place. Of course, if it's a conflict, you shouldn't be hearing it at all. One bad apple spoils the whole decision, but, so it's meant also to motivate board members to go yea or nay, if they're qualified to vote.
So we're just going to add member there.
Right, and should vote to deny as opposed to deny, because one board member, as was pointed out, doesn't have that right to deny.
Right.
Next is on page 10, under transcripts, two colon three dash two. The second sentence says, the option as to whether to furnish a duplicate recording or transcript lies entirely with the board and the municipality. Really?
Yeah.
If somebody wants a transcript If somebody wants a transcript we can say no.
No what what it means is is and this was uh this is pre everybody or just about everybody having an audio video for every hearing uh done and what this is 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 always was meant and still is meant if we keep it as is to make it clear that the board and the municipality are not required to have their own transcription service or their own provision for example uh if an applicant wants even the recording that's already done if there's a cost associated therewith the applicant should bear the costs this is protect the municipality and the board uh from having to to expend monies for the benefit of an applicant who may want to appeal the decision or an objector who may want to appeal the decision let the applicant and a user fee system pay for it let the objector and a user fee system pay for it as opposed to having our township obligated to provide either a court reporter or even whatever associated cost with duplicating the recordation there might be um if and when we're at a point where people say it doesn't cost much or it's free and we're doing it anyway do we really need that I that's a that's a policy decision.
I think we want to leave it in just for protection.
I wouldn't disagree with that.
Yeah.
So the second sentence adds something that wasn't in the first sentence?
The board shall first transcribe the hearing or duplicate recording lured thereof at his or her expense unless the municipality shall assume all or part of the expense. The option as to whether to furnish uh a duplicate recording or transcript.
I mean if there's an Oprah we'll probably
Have to do it anyway.
Right.
And they'd have to pay the cost associated reasonable cost.
If there was an Oprah request we just couldn't point to the video and say had that it.
I think if there was an Oprah request we'd have to generally we're we're providing it.
Yes.
Charging the associate cost. Yeah but we give it to them and if there's a a fee we're entitled to I don't know offhand what that fee might be uh entitled to charge that's reasonable in association with duplicating it or something or somebody's time or cost uh I wouldn't want to forego the township the opportunity to get reimbursed the expense that it is entitled to.
I mean this is specific to transcripts though so.
A lot of this is stated.
We could take that sentence out the option sentence.
Why?
I mean it can leave it in it doesn't it doesn't it's either here or there at this point.
It might ultimately be neither here nor there so it's a matter of how comfortable you feel with the belt and suspender or.
Okay it doesn't. Okay moving on to my next sort of chattering uh comment on page twelve three colon one dash four removal from panel line three it says or having deemed by a majority vote I think that's should say or having been deemed by a majority vote of the board.
So our recusals have normally just taken place individual board members and I I know if I have a question I always just talk to Steve and then Steve advises me yea or nay and of course I always follow his sage advice so um yeah I I I've never seen in all the years I've been on the planning board where it comes up in front of the board for the board to decide if someone has to recuse themselves because usually the individual members take care of that on their own but I guess it could happen.
Anything that could happen probably has and I could tell you some things have um the for example in the unfortunate event where the a board member should recuse then a board member refuses to recuse um one way in which that's handled is just educational this isn't a recommendation or a you know but uh is that the board goes into executive session uh there's a discussion and if the I'll use the term without judging recalcitrant uh member uh continues to refuse to recuse then it gives the board the option by majority vote of in essence expelling them requiring them to recuse uh oftentimes that discussion of that reality being immediately proximate to a an executive session is enough in that rare circumstance for that board member to reconsider their position and decide to do it themselves then be forced to do it publicly. FYI.
I'm assuming the I mean one of the reasons for doing that is this you know you don't want to open yourself up to lawsuit down the way or you know having something a point of appeal or a decision.
Let you go forward with a a board member who was uh had a clear conflict.
Just on a related note um it does say three colon one dash three um if if you if you're a board member and you own property within two hundred feet does that mean that you're required to recuse or it's it's a
Yes.
It's a conflict.
No that you're an interested party by definition it's
By definition.
Yeah and those examples you always run a risk with examples but those are sort of the uh clear general you know the garden variety examples if you will so that's why they're in there to 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 help people understand what it means.
So that's it that's by definition.
Yeah by definition you're if you're within two hundred feet you're an interested party by definition under the MLUL and if you're an interested party you're not deciding the case. That's a conflict yeah.
Okay we're getting close to the end of my comments.
It it is an educational process.
It is. It's good.
Uh on page thirteen four colon one dash three special meeting costs uh line two it refers to rule one colon three dash three I think that should be one colon three dash two that's where it talks about special meetings.
Yeah these that's that's always the risk of referring to specific rule thank you um the uh special meetings yep.
Okay um that's all I had other than the the comment that has already been made about how it would be nice to have this available to the public on the website I mean there's a reference um on the last page rule four four colon six objections um talks about anyone who objects on the basis of violation of any part or parts of these rules and regulations well if they can't see them they don't have any way to object to them so I I do think they should be on the website. Okay that was all I had. Thanks for your patience everyone.
That's good.
We we can make the oh I'm sorry when we're done but we can make the changes and have a clean version for revised version I should say for everybody adopted the next meeting.
Perfect. I have one other um comment on page three um special committees again there at the league conference in the fall um there was quite a bit of discussion about that at some of the sessions I was at and I know other board members and there's been some discussion since about possibly proposing a special committee for um raising issues questions uh about the master plan so I just wanted to we you know a few of us have talked about that and I wanted to see I did speak with Mr. Bai about it and a couple others individually and I wanted to see if there's any uh thoughts among among the board members about that.
I think we should move forward that special committee Kathy I think we should move forward with that special committee.
You do.
Yes.
I'm I'm not clear on what you
This is on page three.
No no I'm not clear on you were describing a special committee to raise questions about the master.
Right people had um it again I'm connecting it the the league conference for me at least was really good this year and I heard discussion at the conference different towns special committees and they had different examples of special committees that they had um in addition to our standing or whatever they're called.
Yes.
So um and and there was quite a bit of discussion about you know questions comments concerns research about master plan and um it like in the conversations I had one of the one of the points that stood out to me if you look at our existing master plan twenty seventeen in the back toward the end implementation there's a whole section short term medium term long term I do remember a couple years ago going through that and and reviewing and I think doing that would I especially since there's quite a few board members new I think that would be a good thing to do if even if we don't have a special committee but if anybody else wants
I'm reacting badly because I think the discussion about master plan should be a whole board.
It is the idea of a special committee.
Special committee discussion.
The the idea of the at least as I took away from the league conferences that is that you know sometimes there's like looking into things or you know offline from the main board work that may come up or need to be done and
Again I think that so for example we did a B eleven review came out of a discussion of the whole board and we went through in a very extensive process to look at B eleven properties the the what you just raised with going back to the reporting of progress we could discuss that as a whole board.
We could.
Say let's get back to that and let's start reporting but but I I'm I'm not feeling comfortable with having
Setting up a special committee.
Committee to do that I think we should talk about as a board the things we think need further action and then we might appoint you know someone to go chase research or whatever you know
Right.
Result from that but rather than the other way you know special committee
I I don't
I'd rather have it go
I know I don't want to imply that the that the discussion was only occurring among the special committee.
Kind of I've kind of felt that way so.
Okay I didn't mean to imply that but so maybe the suggestion is that to take a little time and revisit the master plan.
So when when's our next master plan review it's coming up isn't it?
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
Yeah.
That's when it's as the board knows.
We don't have to wait to examine anytime you can do a full one.
Once every ten years for a master plan reexamination that's a minimum there's no maximum although Paul may want to say that there is a maximum at some point.
There's things like the Madison Evan Corridor coming out that you know could affect you know what we might you know could affect master plan things like that so.
Oftentimes there's other things that are happening that uh uh generate a master plan reexamination in advance of a ten year deadline let's say be they ordinance changes be they corridor studies be they combination of the above.
Yeah I I just really feel strongly that should be a discussion among the whole board and you know the corridor study was done that way I think it came out of a dis a discussion of the board and then there was some specific action taken the B eleven review was a whole board discussion and then we gave Jim Slate a lot of work to do as a result so um you know I just I just feel that that flow is better and then everyone's in the know regarding you know what we're what we're gonna try to tackle in a more detailed way.
Well I I I totally hear what you're saying and I I guess I would suggest that we next time we do have time for a board discussion I mean it's very rare that we get this kind of time but um that we that we discuss we 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 you know plan to discuss some things about the master plan like an update like we had like you did I don't know was that three years ago already been a while.
Well I I guess I would propose then let's just be more aware of of trying to make time and taking time and if any board member has some specific things there's some ideas on things that they you know think need to be looked at we can discuss it at that time and if there's enough people that are interested in like following up and doing some work then we form a special committee for that.
The design standards work came out of discussions things like that you know.
Rather than having a special committee it's okay to go out and identify things we want to do but identify them now and
To the extent we're still talking about the bylaws per se though everybody's comfortable with the language that we have our standing committees and the special committee there's a mechanism for
There's a mechanism.
For generating one when appropriate.
I will again say one of the purposes of doing this is to help us understand the tools at our disposal.
Yeah. And just I'll say one other thing on the special committees um another idea we don't I'm not suggesting we do this I'm throwing out an idea for and I a a special committee idea that I that resonated with me was um they called it at the league they called it communication I would have called it education and you know perhaps the the reverse flow that you're talking about where something comes up at the large board and then you want more information about it um and then it goes to a a special committee but I could think of topics for where there where I see a need for further education of the public and in some cases I could imagine some topics for further education of the board as well so whether you want to set up a special committee and talk about that or something comes up as part of the board discussion and then you set a committee to look into that but I I do think there's um potential there for something we might want to look into.
I would prefer the latter and along the lines to you know tonight we've identified that we want some of the bylaws and information to be here I mean that's a communication education and there you know if you have other suggestions along that way of things you want to be done let's discuss those at another meeting and 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 figure out how we want to address them.
Okay.
Agreed.
Agreed Mr. Chairman could I um return the topic to the master plan for just a second I I wanted to make a couple of comments I was at the same League of Municipalities meeting um and session that Kathy and Anna and Tanya were also at uh where there was an extensive discussion of um master plans there was one presenter who was very very um forceful in saying that master plan reexamination reports are not master plans that that towns have a master plan and your master plan is your master plan and the reexamination report is not the master plan I don't know how many other people in the room agreed with that but she was
Exactly correct.
She was very forceful about that.
Legally correct because it but yeah I'm sorry.
Uh so um that may be a bit concerned because our master plan goes back to nineteen ninety four I think and uh I don't believe that even now all of it is up on the website I could be mistaken but last time I looked at this which was several years ago there was a part B I think it's called to the nineteen ninety four master plan that exists only in paper form uh it would be nice to get everything up in electronic form and it I think it's only part A.
I think it is.
It should be searchable as well.
I thought you said that the uh HPC portion was not.
The historic preservation portion was not there were several portions that were not plan elements that were not uh um.
So George is raising a really interesting question which is how do you ever get past the nineteen ninety four version and have a brand new version of master plan if the amendments are basically just appended to the ninety four but the ninety four is what rules we should we should at some point have a completely re completely re look at the master plan it becomes now the master plan of twenty twenty five or whatever you know however long it takes us to do that.
We should want to I think.
Part of the purpose of the reexamination is to determine whether for example a completely new master plan should be done whether certain elements right that are the elements that are in place right circulation plan element land use element certain elements only need to be revisited that's all part of the reexamination in addition to the requirements of a reexamination per the MLUL the five requirements that are that are in there.
Statement of objectives what did you recommend what have you done?
Always has the ability to determine you know what nineteen ninety four you know that's that's thirty years ago. We need to and a lot has gone on. We really need to to redo the master plan by the same token you know boards take a look and say well we've been a fairly developed community for a long time and really what's necessary is we need to do a reexamination part of which is to reexamine your master plan and development regulations and make specific recommendations that don't necessarily change one of those particular elements but you always have that option before you.
necessarily change one of those particular elements, but you always have that option before you.
Well, since it is so old, I'm kind of of the mind that we, we ought to do it and just make it new, and then we start appending from there. It gets, it, you know, a 30-year-old plan or a 40-year-old plan becomes.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue.
Pretty problematic after a while, right? And layers, no more difficult to just, if we don't want to change stuff, and we just take it and put it in the new version and say, now it's new. You know, it, uh, you don't have to necessarily change it, you just put it in a, the newer version. And then those things that need to be changed, you change and integrate.
Well, I think to some extent you're going to change it. If it's new, there's going to be some changes to, if you're really going to go down that route, you're going to change the element to some extent.
Yeah, of course you are. But I, I mean, I'm just saying, I, I think it makes sense for us to look at a 30-year-old document and say, do we really want to have to keep going back 30 years? Or do we want to do a restart at some point?
There are also new elements, including a required element.
Yep.
That, there's probably four or five elements that didn't exist back in 1994.
Right.
And now there's a required element if you amend or update your land use element. So these are all things that, you know. Well, I mean, I, I, I would, I would, it probably would make sense if we're going to devote some time to a master plan discussion before the full board is to go back, look at the last reexam, everybody, look at 1994, read the MLUL for the required elements and then the voluntary elements, and then we can, you know, have a discussion about, you know, what we may want to think about going forward. You can do, you can do a new.
Four years from now, we'll start that discussion.
Well, yeah, well, listen, it's hard work. It's not, it doesn't happen. It doesn't happen in one year. It's going to take us a while.
It's a ton of work. And you know, the other thing, not only there's a ton of work, but there's costs associated with doing a full blown master plan.
If you're going to do a full blown master plan, you've got, you know, public hearings and things. I mean, certainly want to get public input. This is not something that we do. I mean, that's, you know, there's a lot of, you know, that's, yeah, it's a big, but, yeah.
Well, we could wait until 50 years.
Well, no. No, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying I'm against it, but you know, it's like, you know. And maybe we should start, and maybe we should start on that process, you know.
Well, it's probably going to take us four or five years to complete it anyway.
I don't think it would take that long. I know Madison redid theirs in 2020, I believe, and they had a consultant, and I imagine they decided and budgeted the money to do it. And I'm not saying that there wasn't a lot of involvement on their board and on their professionals, but, um, you know, they did also the whole public process, uh, and public input was done through this quite, I, I, I mean, I was, we were all involved. Anybody who worked or lived in the borough was solicited for opinions about everything you can possibly imagine. About, you know, where do you feel afraid of crossing the road? And, you know, what do you foresee? Just all kinds of opinions. So it was very comprehensive and it wasn't, it, it, it was done by a consultant, and I, I think it would be useful to find out how much that costs for, for, for planning purposes, because I don't think you can, I think that's the way to do it.
Yeah. And, and, yeah, and I'm sure that they did a public, one or more public visioning sessions.
They did. It took.
You're talking, so you're probably talking six figures to, to really revisit all the elements.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's.
That's actually not that much, in my opinion.
It would have to be budgeted, so we'd have to get in the budget cycle too. Tim Quinn would have to be involved.
Yeah, I, I think you have to give it for that kind of thing. If you're really doing all the elements and new elements, it's not four years, but you, you're probably talking.
Started in three years.
Yeah, you're probably talking a year. I mean, you could maybe squeeze it to nine months, but I think you got to give yourself.
Why would you not, why would you not do it all the way in, in the correct way?
I agree.
Yeah.
So one other question, uh, assuming 27 is the date between now and then, is it possible hypothetically to add, um, an element? Like, for example.
Yes.
Like, we don't have a sustainability element, for example, but, but theoretically, it could be possible.
How many points do we get?
Fifteen.
We'll get you the minutes.
You can do it tomorrow.
It, it, there, I'd have to check, actually, but it, but there, there is interest. And, I mean, if, if you look, if you do your research, which some people on the E C are doing, and you can see sustainability elements in, in other towns.
Yep.
Some of them, just the sustainability element is 50, 60 pages long. I'm not advocating that, but I'm saying that it's a, it's a big topic. There's a lot of material in it that, that could be covered, and that's a big job, just that standalone element right there.
Yeah.
And, and there are, um, steps that can be done, and, and R E C is looking into things preliminary to doing something like that. And I think it's worthwhile.
Yeah. And if you redo your land use element, you got to deal with the resiliency and climate as a requirement.
But that's going to happen even if you just want to make a change to your zone, you know, your, um, you, so that, you know, we're kind of vulnerable there at all times.
Yeah.
Any change we make. Exactly. So, you know, you might as, I mean, there's.
Master plan reexamination.
Ah, okay. So I'm getting a sense that people think it might be a good idea. Uh, it's a, it's a lot of work. We'd have to, we'd have to budget for it, so we have to hit the budget cycle through 10, you know, to make sure that we have the funding to do whatever we need to do. Some guidance from our professionals in terms of time span and possible expenditure would be helpful, uh, also. But I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking it makes sense for us to put that on our radar and try to get it done in a reasonable.
It's good to have on the radar.
Yeah.
The, the budget concerns are going to be difficult for the next couple of years.
Yeah, till 2047.
So, yes. Yeah, well, especially, especially, especially this year when we started off big time in the hole.
Oh.
Yeah.
So.
Clarification, did we complete?
Yes.
Let's go back to that first.
Yes, yes, right, right, right.
Yes.
So. So we can get a clean copy and prove.
Okay, so. Right. So that cleanup for next time, and I'm going to suggest then that everyone who hasn't, well, review the master plan. And, uh, we'll put on the agenda sometime, and I'll work with Sony to see what we might have an opening. And again, to, to have a discussion like the business discussion like this on master plan issues and what we might get, get some, and would ask for, for Paul and, and Steve to kind of give us, guide us what they, you know, where, where they see the deficiencies, right, and where there are like legal deficiencies. And Jim, yes. Yeah, yeah, well, we know Jim will, will speak up. Right. So, uh, and then we'll put that in, and we'll, and we'll put that on the agenda for a discussion like this and for a future meeting. So, okay. Okay, any other, I.
Hey Joe, we're ready to do now. I think you have public commentary first.
Right. That's right. And I, see, yeah. Yeah, that's right. Well, he's, yeah.
I make a motion, we adjourn, Mr. Chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?